Okay. And then we have to agree to being paid for that. Let's get got it. Actually, we agree, I agree. Okay, welcome to the April twenty six special meeting of Albany County Planning and Zoning Commission. A fairly focused agenda, I won't say a short one. That we're going to wade into this evening. We'll start out with the roll call of the commission. Miss Hanning here, Mr. Platts here, Ms. Kupernik here, Mr. David here. And put in here, we are at full strength. First order of business would be to approve the agenda. Just by way of introducing the agenda, I would emphasize that there are two quite distinct pieces of our meeting this evening. One is the public hearing on the CAP update because it was circulated for review. And then the second piece will be a discussion amongst the commissioners of how we want to proceed to process that, that whatever information comes forward to us through the public hearing, do the public comment process. We may or may not come to a decision. At this meeting, we're certainly not required to it anyway, so we'll just have to see what we hear. And we have, of course, received a variety of written input over the course of our thirty day review periods. So, I'll accept, will you approve the agenda as distributed? I'm just gonna put that in at this year. Second, is there further discussion? Hearing none, everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say a sign. Okay, agenda is approved, okay. First, the first step in the public hearing, by way of introduction, let's let planning director Gurch just bring us up to speed on how we, how we've come to this point, on the developments and the setting of the CAP update.
Perfect, thank you, Mr. Chairman, on commissioners. So, obviously, the Casper Rockford is an important resource to our community. And city council and the Board of County Commissioners got together, informed, an intergovernmental committee that was tasked to look at the Casper Rockford and how we could continue the protection of this resource at the direction of, of this intergovernmental committee. They recommended, and it was approved by the city council, the board of county commissioners, to work on a joint update of the Casper Rockford Protection Plan. As you're aware, their petition, there are currently two different versions of, of the Casper Rockford Protection Plan. There's the city version that was adopted and the county version that was adopted separately and at different times. While both of these plans are, are similar in nature, they're, they're not the exact same thing. And there is a lot of updates, I think, that, that occurred with the city plan that aren't the same as what was adopted, adopted in the county plan. So, in two thousand, December twenty twenty one, Stan Tech Consulting was chosen to be the consulting firm on this project to help us develop a joint Casper Rockford Protection Plan. The scope of the project includes the compare and review of the city and counties conference of plan, which was done, those plans were reviewed. Memo was, was created and provided. To look at the, the western boundary of the Casper Rockford Protection Area. As you know, the city has adopted one, one boundary and the county has adopted another, so. So that was an area to look at. Site-specific investigation criteria was also another area, and there are some others that were identified by the consultant that were looked at. The, one of the other criteria, or one of the other parts of the scope was to update and consolidate the city and county's aquifer protection plan into one document, which that's what we're working on right now is to get a unified document approved by both the city and the county to review pertinent documents, studies, data collected since the last update of the Casper Rockford Protection Plan, the city's Casper Rockford Protection Plan in two thousand eight, and then incorporating appropriate information in that update. As you know, there's many site-specific investigations done, a variety of different reports and studies that have been completed, and so there's a lot, a lot bigger base of data and information that we wanted to incorporate in this plan. And the last thing, I think there may have been some other things, but these are the big things, is to provide policy recommendations and proposal, regulatory amendments to increase aquifer protection. So, part of the project was to go out to the public and engage them and to get their feedback on, on, on this process and on the, the plan that you're looking at today. So, there were three small group meetings that were held in June and July of two thousand twenty-two. These three groups included members of the Albany County Clean Waters Advocates. It also included a group of technical experts, the engineers and geologists in the community, and then members of the CAP network, which is a group of landowners that is east of town in the aquifer protection area. And so, so those, those three groups were engaged and and we, we collected information from them. And then during the fall of two thousand twenty-two, there are three public meetings that were held, two in September and one in October. In addition to these opportunities for the public to participate, the plan has been discussed that Laramie Planning Commission, Albany County Planning Commission and the Environmental Advisory Committee. In late August two thousand twenty-two, a joint meeting of these three groups was convened. This first meeting was informational, there was a second joint meeting that was held in September of two thousand twenty-two between these groups to to allow additional discussion and questions. And then the third joint meeting of, of these three groups was held at the end of November. And during this meeting, it was determined to create a small technical review committee. This review committee included two members of this commission, two members of the planning commission, and two members of the environmental advisory committee. And they met through December multiple times and provided a report, and that report went to Stan Tech, and they used that to, to update the version, version five, which is the version that we were using, and we, we made some amendments at our last meeting. So that was, that was kind of the base version we were using. And then, let's see. So, yeah, on March fifteenth, that's when those amendments were made. And we approved that for publication and public hearing, which was scheduled for tonight. And then the planning, planning commission held a work session on March twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three. They updated, or they, I believe that was an informational meeting for them. And then they just recently met on Monday to discuss this further, and they made some, made some changes to the document as well. The Environmental Advisory Committee, they met on April sixth, two, two, two thousand twenty-three and approved a resolution supporting the CAP amendments. So that effectively ended their involvement, but they were a valued partner and were able to provide some good information to, for this plan, and yeah, so we're here tonight to have a public hearing. And then we'll see where we go from here, I guess.
That's fair enough. Questions for Gurch? Okay, thank you. So, yeah, we've gotten, as, as Gurch explained, we've had a lot of feedback on this over the, what, year and plus, plus change that's been out. Over the course of our thirty day official review period, we've gotten some public comments. Also, planning commissioners met and have delivered us a very extensive set of amendments, so what we wanted to is continue that process through this evening's public hearing. And that will bring our, our body of input to a close, and based on that, we'll go forward with our decisions about, about proceeding. So, we'll convene the public hearing. The basic layout will be, if you'd like to address the, the commission, you're, you're certainly welcome to. You would ask that you start by stating your name and address in a clear manner. We appreciate the fact that Boomerang has sent a reporter, so if she needs to clarify something with you afterwards, it'd be useful for you to, to give us a name and an address. We'd ask that you confine your remarks to three minutes and to stay on topic. On, on that point, I would emphasize that there's, there are two distinct pieces of the process going forward. One is the CAP, which is a, is, is a plan, it includes copious recommendations, but there's nothing regulatory about the Casper Rockford Protection Plan, and that process will follow adoption of the plan. That's the point at which the planning and zoning will be reviewing regulations and then passing those on to the county commission for their consideration, potential approval. So, while CAP is the basis for a lot of that, just bear in mind that the actual regulations are, are yet to come. And so if there's something very specific in terms of a regulation that you anticipate, be aware that you'll have another opportunity to, to address that, so. Let us open the public hearing. We'll do in-person first and then via Zoom if we have anyone. So, we are open for business, yes, ma'am?
May I come?
Please, please, yeah, come forward. Yeah, this is the mic that's picking you up, so.
Oh, okay.
It does, does a pretty good job.
I speak kind of softly.
Okay.
Tell me if I need to speak louder.
Name and address and go for it.
My name's Patricia Cavacconi. I live at twelve fifty-one North Twenty-first Street, apartment K fifty-five in Laramie. And you missed all my name. Would you like that? It's C A, B as in Victor, I, C C, H I O, N as in Nancy, I.
I didn't come close.
You were pretty close. Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the planning and zoning committee, really appreciate being able to be here this evening. I'm speaking for the Albany County Clean Water Advocates. And we wish to publicly state our appreciation for your extensive work on the Casper Aquifer Protection Plan, known as CAP. Your work together with the city to accomplish this task is much appreciated. Thank you. Thank you to the community members who've all added their comments and taken the time to comment and make note to you their feelings on the protection plan for the Casper Aquifer. We have no additional substantive comments this evening. Just again to thank all of you for your time that you've spent on this important issue, thank you so much.
Thank you. And thank you for your participation over the course of the others. Very once, very twice. Do we have anyone online who would like to offer a public comment on the Casper Rock Protection Plan update? There are no public on, fine, okay, sometimes they're, they're hiding in the weeds. Okay, seeing, hearing none, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Chen. Thank you, sir, second, I second. Okay, it's been moving second that we closed the public hearing. All in favor of that motion, please say aye. Aye, 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 opposed, same sign. Yeah, motion carries. So, all right, now, this is a conversation we took ourselves with support from, we have legal and planning staff with us this evening. What we want to do with, with all these comments and edits. Let me first point out this, the timeline and the committee relevant to how we want to proceed. Bearing in mind that, that we've been under very strong urges to cooperate with the city to come up with a single city-county document. And as Mr. Gurch alluded to earlier, that is involved several now actually sit down, joint meetings with our colleagues in the city. They met most recently a couple days ago on the twenty-fourth and went through an extensive list of amendments and produced what they felt was an acceptable final document. Well, here we are meeting today. The county commissioners, as I understand it, did not put this on their May second agenda.
It is not.
Okay. And that's important because that would mean that the next point at which the county commissioners would take this up under their regular schedule would be at their May sixteenth meeting. Between now and then, city planning commission will meet again on the eighth. This body will meet again, our regular meeting on the tenth. So, the point of that rather intricate schedule is that we will have a second meeting under the regular schedule to work these documents before there's, before we will present them to the county commission, if we decide they are ripe to the point of, of even being presented to the county commission. If they were to take up a recommendation from us at that meeting, they would then put it out for additional public review and could, at the earliest, under the regular schedule, approve the CAP at their June sixth meeting. So this, that's kind of how the, the next couple of months will, will trade out. And that's probably the most ambitious schedule left, you see how it goes. The conclusion of that is that we can make additional amendments and it will slow down the county approval process as long as the changes are not considered substantive, in which case we will want to go back around for a cycle of public review. So should there be any sense of urgency, perhaps we can set that aside, that's not note, the, the use of word substantive, the rules under which we operate is that if this body were to make substantive changes, changing the direction of the, some aspect of the plan, then we would want to go back out to public review and have another public hearing. If what we're doing by way of amendment is clarifications, we'd like the document to be as clean and readable as possible, and it's a large enough document, every time you read it, you're going to find a, a straight sentence or, or verb is misconjugated. We're a little clarification based on references, so we're welcome to do those as we think works best. We would like to get as many of those adopted as possible. I had an earlier conversation with Mr. Gurch and Mr. Ayers, Representative County Attorney's Office, and as I understood it, so far, the amendments that they have seen proposed by city planning do, would not meet that threshold of substantive, if I'm understanding that correctly. If you're not, if there's an extra Gurch, so remains to be seen if we go forward with that. The other contact, just I'd like to maybe aware of, Mr. Stacy, who is the lead representative of the Stan Tech team, has similarly reviewed the amendments that have been proposed up to this point and found those to be acceptable to the folks who authored the plan, so. At this point, everybody is, is on board to move forward. Ideally, we would have a fully collated version of the planning, city planning amendments, but that was just two days ago, so we don't have that. Since we're here, though, I'd like to work through their amendments as best we can and consider others that we might want to add, including, of course, those that have come to us here in the recent part of our, our public comment period. Also, in that, in the latter category, as we processed what the city did two days ago, we discovered that they never saw our amendments to the appendix. It's a, a small matter, but Mr. Mr. Teeny here, the city planning director, has been quite conscientious about making sure that, that when we say it's the same document, it is the same document. So those guys will, will need to see the amendments that we made previously to the to the appendices that just got overlooked in that, as we went forward. So, by way of saying, we expect to have at least those amendments. Well, we've already passed those amendments, they haven't yet seen again, so I'm thinking those will be on those guys' agenda for the second or the eighth rather, regardless. Okay, what's, what's your pleasure? The last item of our packet was a little synopsis that Mr. Gurch and I put together of what city planning did. If there are questions on that, so how, how do we want to do this, piece by piece? We didn't, but I have a question today, please. With the published documents, inclusive of our amendments that we made on part of fifteen, were not?
So the published document, the, the main document included everything. However, the appendix did not.
Okay.
So, so I mean, with that, I, I think I would feel more comfortable if we just re-adopted those that you've already made, and then we'll just make sure that going forward that those are following it together.
Okay. Mr. Chairman.
And I just, absolutely quickly, and I, I just responded with you earlier, there was a version of the appendix that had the, say, the correct
yeah, county regson, where did that come from?
So that was, I made that version, but it just didn't make it to the website for yeah, it was just basically an oversight. I think I pulled the, the amended version of the, the base regulations, and then I pulled the the version from Stan Tech or the appendix, even though I had another version of the other, I just, yeah, I don't know.
Okay, I was just curious how I came across it somewhere. Well, I did about five o'clock today, I was wondering what was going on.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, well, so, so that's where we can get it corrected today. Moral of the story is that that's confused and we'll straighten that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, but and I feel that commissioners, what I suggest we try to do or do actually is to aim to adopt, to incorporate the amendments that the PC made by the end of this meeting, so we had one unified document going forward. I understand we're not going to be able to recommend or pull documents without county commissioners yet, but I think that would make things easier for both sets of staff and commissions, one, if we can do that. And I think we can do that.
I, I, I think that's right, and my understanding is that Mr. Stacy's statement of collating, as I'm calling it, those five stacks and elements.
And, and I'll throw to say to my fellow commissioners also, having listened to the plans, the city leaders' planning commission meeting Monday, and also confirming, confirming, uh, that I, I'm fine with all the amendments as they were passed on Monday, and, and I've got no problem.
Others want to weigh in on just how, how to wait into this, you want to go through each of those five or just?
Oh, I'm sorry, did, oh, yeah, it's true, so, um, let me back up just a little bit. So, the reason it's not scheduled for the Board of County Commissioners is one of the things we, we would like to do. We, as in myself, and I know Mr. Teeny would like to have all these amendments given to Stan Tech, so they work through the document, make sure it's clean, and then we move forward with, with that clean document. Instead of, you know, because I, I, I made my corrections, but you know, it'd be nice just to have come from one source when they're all done, if that makes sense. So that was the reason that we postponed it till the May sixteenth meeting. And that was something I requested, and I, I talked to the chairman a little bit about that. And so what, what would be best is, is if we could get as much approved today, because then we know what we've approved, and, and then Stan Tech can work on what, you know, getting that all, all changed would be the best. I mean, if you want to wait until the next meeting to get everything approved, then I, then they don't really have a finalized document to kind of work from, if that makes sense, so. Because we know the city has approved their, at least the everything but the appendix is not, it will be the, be the same if you approve what, what they made, the changes they made. So that at least could be worked on, you know, if we need to wait for the appendix to be changed, which I think those, those changes are so minor that I don't know if it would be a big deal, but, or Mark to just change those as well, but. So that would be my, my hope, if, if everybody's comfortable with it. Obviously, if everybody else is not comfortable with the document and we need to make changes, then, you know, that's your prerogative, but, but if everybody's comfortable with it, I would hope to, to just get that approved, and then we can give it to Mark, and we know we have a pretty much finalized document, other than we've created a new step for planning commission, unfortunately, so.
They're, they're agreeable, and I, I totally agree with that, let's just, let's push the ball as far, as far as we can. Okay. And whether we call it version six or five C, it doesn't matter. So, we would deliver to city planning commission their version, yeah, everything we adopt from them, and then note what we're changing beyond that.
Right, right, that would be great. Um, may, I mean, we ask if that's okay with the planning.
Yeah, Director Teeny, would you like to weigh in on how, how, what would you like from that?
They made me come up at their meetings, so.
Planning and zoning commission, so what, what David has kind of outlined, I think, is appropriate. If you, as a commission, decide that the changes that were recommended by the planning commissioner are acceptable, at that point, we'll have essentially the same document. As David noted, also, there was the changes in the appendix that we didn't know about, so what we'll do is we'll bring that back to the planning commission at their May eighth meeting, which then if you approve those tonight, assuming that you do, and the planning commission approves those on May eighth, we will have the exact same document. Also, any other things that happened this evening, we could then at least consider it that May eighth meeting, and from there, the hope is, is we have published for a public hearing for the city council meeting on May sixteenth as well. For in theory, adoption of the plan, if everything continues to align in terms of our comments that come from planning commission and planning zoning. So, I think, I think we're on the same page. So, so, I'm glad I've met my obligatory time at the podium.
But, yeah, it's, it's been a I don't think cumbersome, but the process that has to be managed, get everybody on the same page. I liken it to the Senate and the House, each doing their own thing, and the, the whole conference committee and try to come up with something that, that can go back to the actually authority bodies to, to report, okay? So, yes, ma'am.
Can I ask a question, something on the way, maybe? We have received some very, very late comments that we were unable to review properly because of the timeline. When it is a public hearing and people come and you know, voice their concerns or share their thoughts, it's, it's easier for us, or just for me to ask questions, understand what's going on. The same with Zoom, that's not a problem, but when we get something in writing that we can't even review before the meeting, I think it's, it's it's, it's shame, and it creates the misconception that we are uninterested in those comments. When in reality, we just, we don't have time between when they arrive on our desk and, and when the meeting is set. Is there any way where we can set a limit for future public hearings to have written comments submitted two days before the actual meeting? That, that if you want to testify in front of the commission in person or via Zoom, that's fine, but if you only want to send your comments in, in writing, that you give us enough time, because then basically some of the people, you know, communities, some of our constituents, you know, may feel unseen when we really don't mean to.
Yeah, yeah, I, I share that concern, at the same time, we posted a version of the CAP for public comment. So, and that public comment period runs through this meeting. So, rather than backing up from that meeting, it may be a bit of more appropriate thing is to go forward, and it's just, it's just we'll get all the public comment. And then our decision-making will be X days later, I mean, they could get you to the same point.
That, that's the same idea, it's just that I feel uncomfortable that I haven't had a chance to review comments that were given to us, and people have put a lot of time and effort into them, and I have no chance of, you know, I skin through. And I have no chance of, you know, I skin through, but I couldn't. Assimilate and contemplate and think about them. So, if we can maybe change our process a little bit, then so some.
Yeah, like, they could think about that going down the road, just to bring the record up to speed, the, what. Commissioner David is referring to is a a quite a lengthy set of of detailed comments that showed up. On emails, for those who would have checked their emails about two hours ago. Um, so we obviously, uh. I just glanced at it, there's a lot of meat there, there's a lot of good comments there, so. Uh, certainly it is appropriate for those comments to come in, it would be. Handier if it had been earlier, but that's that's as a public commenter myself, I I've done a lot of other things, as the public always is, so. No, that was, that was entirely appropriate, and I think the answer is that we really can't, I don't feel like I can do much with those tonight. Um, so my thought was we would just defer that set of essential amendments. Till a later meeting when we've had time to to go through those. Although, let me ask Mr. Gersh. The the value of a public hearing is everybody gets to hear what everybody else is saying, so. What's the status of those kinds of things? Can we add them to the? With the website? I'm just thinking of others. You have to stop somewhere, he said, she said, he said, she said, he said, she said, do we have a? How do others respond to comments that come in, say, with or orally or written at this meeting? Or how do others respond from here, or is there opportunity for that, I'm just?
I mean, we we can definitely add them to the packet. Um, I mean, they'll be with the minutes, right, we'll we'll add those to the minutes to be on. The website and anything that comes to you guys, um, if you, even if you haven't had a chance to look at it, it will be. Passed on to the Board of County Commissioners, so it'll be in their packet as well. Um, I mean, we tried to do that at least, so.
But putting it in minutes of this meeting, I guess, would address my concern.
Yes.
And then if somebody else, I mean, we're never for closing public comment, anybody can comment anytime they want.
Correct.
It's just that we'll be outside our formal period.
Sure, okay.
Yeah, all right, that would, does that sound reasonable? Okay, so, let's just set that. Group of comments aside. Unless somebody's looked at them enough to wanna comment on them, all right, um, and go back through what we have, what we have received. To to this point. Which is the planning machine. Basically. We had one written comment came in a couple of days ago from Ms. Gonzalez. And, and, um. Let's take everything in. In due course, uh, about. Your priority to uh, to uh. Tenure. The biggest, the first group of amendments that got over from city planning. Has, do do folks wanna go through those one by one, have you had a chance to look at them enough to satisfy yourselves that they're in good shape? Or how do you wanna process the? City planning commission amendments.
Are you talking about the Dropbox?
Well, they went through, they 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 divided the comments in five sets.
Yeah.
And went through those, actually, six, but. We'll call it five for our purposes, uh, their meeting. And by way of collation, I do have some concern that we might have amendments that are on top of each other, and that's something that we'll get sorted out as well, I don't. Haven't identified any of those, but yeah. That's what they did, they started with, there were comments from the staff, there were comments from. Uh, Chair Moody, there were comments from me, there were comments from Commissioner Machino.
Okay, I thought I just can't get into the Dropbox. But that's not what you're talking about.
Yeah, I don't know what you mean by the Dropbox. Yeah, yeah, Mr. Gersh, put those all in.
I did see the the, um, the link to go to this. Which was, which now it is attachment five in our packet, right?
Okay, you're talking about the piece that we call the discussion guide?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's accessed through that link, that's live link. Maybe you weren't able to do that?
No.
Oh, okay.
Isn't that essentially attachment five of our packet?
No, this is, this is the document that that I produced. Uh, more recently.
Yeah, that was a little confusing, yeah.
Oh, then, yeah, I mean, this.
Yeah.
Maybe I could just walk you through that. So. So the, the. And and we have both the chair of city planning as well as their planning director here, they can correct me if I'm wrong, um. They went through the this this series of comments. Some of which are listed in Mr. Tini's memo. That's where you'll find the Chris Moody comments and then the channel comments. Um, they looked at. Our amendments. Based on on a document that Mr. Girich prepared. So there was standard version five, we amended our last meeting, that was provided to the city planning. They said they loved everything we did. They were willing to accept, they could tolerate it, pick your, pick your verbs. Then they looked at uh, the recommendations from Mr. Moody that are outlined in narrative form in Mr. Jim's memo. And they accepted or rejected. As outlined in the the piece that Director Gersh and I put together. Um, basically, um. What are they, uh, there were just a couple of things that Mr. Moody uh. Wanted to do that staff didn't, and the planning commission went along with Mr. Moody. So, to 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 see those. Individually, one has to look at Mr. Key's memo.
Okay, that's what you're proposing.
This is kind of a treasure.
Trying to figure out where you want, sorry.
Well, okay, so I guess I'm asking you, do you want to go through those one by one? Or are there ones that you want to just bring to our collective attention, I think that's, maybe that's a better way to. Ask my stumbling around question, do you? Do you want to go through each of those comments? Or do you, or have you looked at that enough to say, I'm I'm fine with all of these except number seven, let's talk about. What's, what's your pleasure, Commissioner, correct? I'll reiterate, I I read it to all these amendments, that they stand, I'm fine with them.
Mr. Chair, I I'm in agreement with, um, Commissioner Platt, but I I felt that the, um. The amendments were all reasonable, um, I appreciated some of the ones from. Uh, Chair Moody that were accepted, cuz I agree that that they should be accepted. Um, and I I'm fine with where we, where we are. Yeah, I was fine with them, I appreciated the explanations that were put there, not supported, that was, that was.
Good.
But if you, I feel the same.
Mr. Chairman, I can move, make a motion. I I move that we incorporate the amendments that were approved by the city planning commission on Monday. Into our working version of. The capital, the federal plan, then five, and we made a march. And and that should bring us to a point where we have a unified document now.
Including the appendices.
Well, we haven't, they haven't seen it.
We haven't, so.
So this would see, see that, this would be bringing.
We, I thought the request was for us to re. Re-approve the the changes we made to the appendices to normally put. Oh, okay, sure.
Yeah, so is there a second for this motion?
I I can.
So. Well, let me try to rephrase it, make sure we understand what we're doing, this would be to accept all of the amendments. That were approved by the city planning commission on Monday.
Yes.
Okay, that will bring us to that common. Okay, so rather than going so individually, if that is an acceptable motion. There are further discussion of that motion. And then I I would offer by way of discussion that I concur with. This movement's platform and, and I looked at those. Found them all acceptable. Um, okay, if. If that's the motion on the floor, there's no further discussion, do you want us to vote, Miss Hanning?
Aye.
Mr. Platt, aye. Scott Corning?
Aye.
Mr. David?
Aye.
And Clay, aye. Okay. That would bring us to. Our own additions. Now, I sent a version of those to you earlier, Mr. Gersh, can those be brought up?
Um, yes, I can bring those up, I think I actually have them in a different format, but maybe.
They, basically, there's two things that we. amended. That the city didn't look at, one was just this moving target that the county has presented to Stan Tech where. They keep writing, here's what the county regs are, and then we change the county regs, and so then they have to go back and say, no, no, our our second. So that was just a substitution, but in in deference to, you know, city planning, let's make sure that. That we provide them the document that is exactly as we think it should be. The second piece, so that's just. An obvious one, but but it's it's appendix K, I believe. Um, the other bit was, uh. When Stan Tech compiled all their public comments from these various meetings that Mr. Gersh described, including sitting down with these specific advocacy groups. They. Uh, referenced the comment and how they responded with comment, and then where in the August version of the cap they had. Fixed it, and and our sense of our last meeting was that that's not terribly useful, because the August versions. There's water long under the bridge, so the amendment that we offered was to, to uh. Keep the table, but not attempt to to refer it to any specific spot of of some past. Version of the cap. And so that, those two concepts are embodied in. The amendments that Mr. Gersh is bringing up on the screen. So we should see appendix, I think it's H and K, and that. Yes. So this, this one was, this is H. And so it was basically to replace. The, sorry. Opera protection overlays on regulations with what's currently adopted, which is the. February, February twenty first, um, document, which is this. Or, yeah. And and the version of that that we talked about earlier, it has been the uh, the very twenty one on.
On the.
Each age, so, yeah, uh, I think that's, that's the correct way to do that. Um, right, so that's one amendment, this would be the, the second one. Where we would.
Show me to read what that says.
Yeah, that doesn't look like quite what I sent you, or, so I'm modifying the suggestion slightly.
Oh. Okay.
I can describe it, or you can bring it up as I sent it to you.
Okay, well, it's different than what you provided previously, or?
Yeah, yeah, it's just I just looked at this afternoon and realized that we didn't have done an incomplete job.
Oh, okay.
Okay, and so since we're starting over again.
We'll try this again.
If you've got that right, describe it, it's just I chopped a few more words. In that.
Yeah, I'm just trying to find it, you're right.
Okay, or exactly, walk you through it quickly enough.
Either, either way, I'll I'll try pulling up, you can walk us through it.
Blow, blow the text up there a little bit, if you would be some kind for us, each of eyes. That looks like, yeah, that looks like, yeah, that's what I was.
Yeah, let me see if I can figure out.
Guess I'll be the sponsor, remember? Bigger, bigger, bigger.
I'm trying, I'm trying. Okay. Now I can, now I can do something.
Yeah, now we're talking, and more so, okay, so here we are. Well.
A little, they're smaller, smaller, bigger, that's right.
Okay, it's that sentence that starts out, the table documents comments received. By group, and then if we put a period there, it wouldn't say, and notes document locations. Where those comments were addressed. And so forth, and then would would delete that column that talks about the document locations. So the point of the amendment is to make text match table, and we would no longer attempt to identify the document location. Nor would the text suggest that that you could find the document location. And that same. The the table tape continues on several pages, so the idea is that column would disappear from all subsequent pages. And then there's a whole second set of comments with a very similar rhetoric, paragraph. That would be modified in the same manner.
And that is because those locations are moving targets as we keep on.
Yeah, yeah, I'll turn it would be a find the location in the current version, but that would be quite.
And there'd be a lot of errors.
Yeah, I thought it'd be easier just to, just to not.
Okay.
Attempt that, is is the the sense of the amendment.
This is a different one, this is your.
And that's the second, that's the second table.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, and there's exactly the same. There's no, okay, so. I I would. I would propose that amendment to. If I have a motion and a second.
Or are you gonna make a motion?
Well, I I clearly it comes from the chair, and so I might be influencing the. I'll be the sponsor. May I have a motion to approve those amendments?
I like a motion that we accept.
Is there a second, I I. Further discussion of these. Clean-up amendments. Hearing none, better say aye, 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 oppose, same sign. Okay, so those will be transmitted to city plan. Um, all right, we did then have a. A, do we want to take up the the comment we received, the written comment we received last week? Apparently we had time to look at that from Ms. Gonzalez. We, look at that one?
Okay. Well, I just have a question, actually, obtained of this, okay? When we receive comments uh from a party in a hearing, are we required to believe that?
Yeah.
The way I'm not hurting.
We we are not required legally, which we may be.
We've taken the.
Yeah, and we, then we can treat them as we think is appropriate. I would offer a a comment on that particular amendment, that perhaps it's premature, and I was alluding to that earlier, that. Um, and and the county. Commission have received a number of comments with respect to the western boundary. Um, it. Many of those were submitted to their February twenty one meeting, where they were actually looking at changing the rules. But had had not changed the boundary, understandably, I think the public has become somewhat. Confused in terms of which piece of this bubble falls where, so in fact, at that February twenty one, there was no. There was nothing in that package that knew the boundaries, but those who have been following this two years, as. Mr. Gersh alerted earlier, are quite sensitive to how the boundary moves. Nor would adoption of this cap move any boundaries, what adoption of the cap would be is to accept. A report that was commissioned by Stan Tech. Which does include their recommendations of how we might move the boundary, but we will take up moving the boundary in earnest. In subsequent meetings as we develop regulations. So, while I appreciated the comment and it's certain it's appropriate, uh, my advice to Mrs. Gonzalez was let's hold that thought. And we'll come back to it, please.
Sure, I would agree with you, because I already, and I said, but we are not. Talking about regulations yet, but. And so I too thought. I don't know how to answer these questions.
Yeah, and my answer would be, hold that thought, and and as as per earlier comments from this commission. Earlier comments are more. Uh, easily accommodated than later comments, so, so I'd rather have somebody coming in. A little too early, a little too late, um, and 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 my suggestion is we move forward into the regulatory phase of this. Uh, and I've asked. And I've asked Director Gurch to assemble all of the comments that were received. On the February regulation package, even though they, they weren't submitted to us. And, and nothing that came to the county commissions ever came to us. I, I just thought it would be fair to folks for us to reach into that body of public comments to inform ourselves. Of, of what people are concerned about, what issues are out there, rather than requiring them to say the same thing again, is in the right place. So perhaps that's presumptuous, but I think that would be fair to folks. And it is always difficult to get the public engaged, so there's a way to do that. So that was.
I appreciate it, you know, and I'm ahead of time, so.
So are there, go ahead.
Well, I mean, she also commented on the notification, she didn't feel like she was notified appropriately. Our landowners notified at this.
Um, yeah, Mr. Chairman.
First, um, to answer that, um, this process didn't start recently. It's been, or since twenty twenty one with the approval of StanTech as the consultant. Early on, or actually it was probably last fall. We had a series of three different public hearings, all of which were heavily published in the newspaper. The boomerang, as well as the branding iron. I believe that we had information on websites. And also through our Facebook page, pages. I believe the city probably had it on theirs as well, I know it was on ours, or I believe it was on ours. But, but those are, those are the things that we did, obviously there's notice for this meeting. Any of our agendas has, has had that cap on it, if anybody ever looks at those. Did we go outdoor to door? No, but we did more than what statutory required. And, and unfortunately, it is very difficult to reach everybody and learn. Because everybody uses a different media source. And we try, you know, obviously, could we do better? Probably, you know? But, but the information has been out there. If you're looking for something, it's always on our website, everything that we do. But those are the ways that we did it, whether it was good enough or whether it reached everybody. It probably didn't, but we do our best.
Do you know in, in the past, when the boundary has changed? Like from the township section, township range section kind of methodology to an approximated line? Was specific mailings put out to property owners at that time?
No, I don't believe so.
It would, would doing something like that. Do you, off the top of your head, have a guesstimate for like how many property owners would need mailings?
I, I, I don't have a guesstimate, I mean, that's something we can figure out, but.
I'm gonna get the potential cost.
Fifty-ish, I don't know, I'm not told, just throwing something out there. Um, cause obviously in the more populated areas, it might be, there might be quite a few, but then you get way north or way south. And whatever it might, it's only be a few landowners, so, yeah, it's really hard to say.
Thank you. Mr. Gurch, I would encourage us to send mailers. But a fairly cheap way to do it, it's just every dollar. Kind of mellow and I think it will. It'll be good to do when we are headed towards starting regulations and actually, you know, taking action. What we're doing right now, which is gathering information.
Yeah, we're, we're getting a little ahead of ourselves, but, but there's, we'll look on the road and see where, where that is. I, I, I wouldn't. Respond to a part of that thought, though, I, I, I think I would categorically reject the notion. That we need anybody's permission to plan. And that's what we're doing at this stage. And the thought that some landowner that might currently own a piece of property for which we are designing a plan. To be implemented by regulations down the road in years to come. I, that just seems completely untenable, unworkable and unjustified. When it comes to, here are the regulations, that's a different discussion. And I look forward to us having that, you know, focused way as to what is a responsible way to engage the public. In regulations that have a potential impact on their property, that's fair. Yeah. What other, other thoughts on that? And the same subject will definitely be something we'll come back to. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Timmy had his hand up earlier. Yes, Mr. Teeny, would you like to create some wisdom in our way?
He volunteered this time.
My consulting question, I was just gonna mention that for, I, to go to the question of member Hanning. When, in two thousand and ten, when the city did a boundary change, the boundary change. When it was actually changed to the township range, we did notice every single person within the. And it was like three hundred and some people, three hundred and some properties, so. That was our requirement to notify any person within the new overlay zone, which was what was created. And so we, we did do that for estimate, so that's helpful.
Thank you, then, and it strikes me that, that would be an obvious GIS exercise. To just say, the, the change from the current boundary, this is the two thousand and one boundary. To the, whatever we end up adopting. That would be a strip of, of ground anywhere from ten feet to maybe a thousand feet wide. One could easily identify all property owners in that strip.
Yeah, it wouldn't take much, our GIS analyst in my office can probably with that, after ten minutes or something. The list of who needs to be contacted, so.
Yeah, it's doable, for sure. Why don't you do that for us as we move into this? I'd like to see us move forward at our next meeting to just, you can assemble some of the materials that will inform our decisions on regulations. So sure, let's, let's add that as a, that request. Other thoughts? Just remind ourselves that there is a, another quite extensive set of comments. Those should be shared with Mr. Stark, Mr. Starky, Mr. Stacy, coming from Mrs. Sarky. In that, my just very quick glance through them, many of them were of a, of a kind of granular nature. Of perhaps a misplaced patient or something. And then we thank Mrs. Sarky for the care, but she went through the whole document as a proofreader. And I suspect that, that Mr. Stacy will embrace that opportunity. As to the more substantive pieces, we'll just take that up. But takes some time, go through those, and you can decide what we want to do with them, if anything, at our next meeting. Uh, Mr. R, so you, so you anything go by that causes you concern, something you'd like to comment on?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, then we're.
I, I am.
We gotta, we gotta pass for lawyers, this is good, go ahead.
So I'm just wondering, I, um, I didn't get much time with Mr. Starky's comment either. But, um, some of them were addressing methodology and, you know, things that happened during the testing and stuff. Can we have StanTech respond, some kind of response from them to the, I have, how are we gonna evaluate those points?
A good question. There's a contract between the city and the county and StanTech. The managers for that are Mr. Gurch and Mr. Parkin. I assume that responsibility is developed from Mr. Teeny. So. StanTech builds by the hour, what, what's our access, what's your thinking about? We have. No need to hire Mr. Stacy to respond to all these new comments, or what's your thinking there?
Respond as in just provide comments back on?
Yeah, evaluate the comments.
Yeah, yes, evaluate comments.
Are they valid concerns or not? Yeah, how do we know what the merits of this one, so?
Right, um, I mean, that'd be something I'd probably need to discuss with Derek to see if that would. I don't even know that would be within the contracts. But then, I don't know, so, as of this point, as a consultant, I'm always sensitive to the budget and the scope aligning. So, right, timeline, so yeah, let's, let's leave that to you guys. Okay, to see if you want to assign your consultant to do something like that. Otherwise, we'd be on our own. And, and still listening comment from our colleagues and the community. To try to evaluate this.
Further business for us on these topics. Hearing none, I'll accept a motion to adjourn. I'm going to adjourn.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Good, George. Would it be, I, I don't know, I'm not a Robert's Rules person or whatever, but should we just? Are, are we going to certify that, that document to the, the board, or are we waiting to certify the document?
No action taken, this was what I would.
Okay. So you made those amendments and then? We're waiting till next meeting to?
To do some more amendments.
Okay, so we will not have an amended document to get the StanTech to, to work with, is that what you're saying?
The, the document that they should be working with is. City planning commission, all those amendments now have been approved, so it's a working document.
So just have them do what we approved.
I think that's, that would be the place to, to move forward into the next version.
Right.
No, I, I don't think that needs formal motion, you know, like in Mr. R's. What we are doing is processing amendments as they come before us, and at some point we will take a vote on the package. Would, would you like to see that made a preformalized? I mean, we have, we approved those.
Okay.
Right, so I'm, I'm not comfortable with where we are, as long as it's clear in the record. Okay, then we have approved those. That's now the, that's now the new base. Plus the approved appendix, yes, that's, that will be new to city planning. But, but let us not continue marking up previous versions and confusing ourselves, so. We're not being so much easier. Version five as amended by, by, by city planning. And as further amended in that small way in the hind of this is bias. Everybody clearing where we are? Trying to say it correctly. All right, there was a motion started, so we're even a second from the motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second discussion. See if none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.